Planning board will call to order. First up for general information is James George.
What would you like me to do?
Tell us what you are here for.
Have a seat.
Good evening. For the record, my name is James George. I am the firm lead manager for a company called Mobility. Mobility is doing a national small cell project on behalf of Sprint and others, but Sprint is our main client. I have worked through the Board of Selectmen. We've had a public hearing. And what we are proposing to do is to utilize right-of-way space from the jurisdiction and plant new, well, at the moment, one utility pole in the right-of-way space, either in the Mast dot right-of-way space where we have land control or in the jurisdictional right-of-way space at the edge of the wireless overlay district at Mill Valley Road coming up Route 9, that corner where you take the hard right at Mill Valley. That's about where your wireless overlay district ends. That's where I'm going to propose the pole. This particular pole is, will house a small cell antenna, a small three-foot antenna on the top of it. I'm going to seek through site plan approval, 55 feet. I believe that's allowed in the ordinance. Or I would work to get whatever I can pull off. The thing about these types of poles is they're going to be smaller in nature with a wireless small cell antenna on the top of it to add value to the proposal. We're going to propose a light, if that is the will of the body, an LED light to illuminate that area, and/or a camera. We're doing a lot of cameras with jurisdictions that want to see the intersection and maybe pipe it into your existing cameras that go into your public safety. So the facility itself is essentially going to be a 55-foot designed steel metal pole, very similar in nature and look to the Mast dot poles that you see coming off 91. There's two of them right in a row. This particular pole design, steel metal, I'd call that 50 feet. And they put a camera up there. So Mast dot has come all the way from Springfield, all the way up Route 91, all the way to the Vermont border with these types of facilities. That's essentially what we're proposing. We acknowledge that although we are a CLEC, a competitive local exchange carrier that has the right to be in the right-of-way space, either through the state property or the jurisdictional right-of-way, because it has a wireless antenna, it is a wireless application. So we're going to seek the approval of the right-of-way space through the body, through the Board of Selectmen and come before this body for the site plan review. The pole itself and the attachments, the opportunances, the wireless antennas, et cetera, are going to pay taxes on the channel. So similar in nature to what Verizon and EverSource and the LECs do that transport the electricity in the town in the right-of-way space, they pay taxes, personal property tax on their channel, the pole, the conduits, and the hardware that they have. So we're in a similar classification. So the upsides to the jurisdiction are, it is taxable in nature. We've gone through your assessing department and your town administrator and discussed the taxes and the value of the camera and the light to the jurisdiction. So that's what we're proposing.
Now, you're talking right-of-way space. You're talking the right-of-way of Mill Valley Road? Or what right-of-way are you speaking about?
Okay, there's two options. It was originally proposed in Mill Valley Road down by the, you take the right on your way to the farm, there's a storage facility off to the left. I feel as if it's going to be wet in along that right-of-way space. We've done some survey work down there. We're considering moving it up closer to Route 9 at the intersection there where the commons is. That's state right-of-way space. And as you take the right, it becomes the Mill Valley right-of-way space. I think through survey, and once we get the plans together, it will be, it will end up in the Mast dot Route 9 right-of-way space rather than the Mill Valley town-owned right-of-way space. Either way, your compensation is taxes for the channel.
We can't give the jurisdiction to allow you to build in the state, by the way.
We would come forward with land control from the state of Massachusetts, the Mast dot people, that would allow us the right to be in their right-of-way space. I think where this body comes in is oftentimes people don't know where to put us. We acknowledge that it is a wireless communications facility that we're building, so that's why we're coming before this body. And that's what the proposal will be, site plan review.
Just talking about one at the moment.
What?
One.
I'm talking about one at the moment, yes.
One pole antenna structure.
Yes.
And how many for the future?
Say it again.
How many you got planned for the future?
Well, okay, I believe we're going to have one more closer towards the highway coming forward. And what my territory is coming all the way up Route 2 and all the way up Route 91. I have several hundred sites. The notion way up here, up along 91, is to try to launch some kind of backhaul and bandwidth towards the Wired West territory, start on the New York border and come this way. So we're really trying to focus on that area out towards the west. This is a backhaul densification program. And what does that mean? Sprint is currently propagating in your community. They're on towers and they're propagating. The high-value areas to us are the cloverleafs and the highways and the dense areas of UMass Amherst. I'm all over that. And the college areas. The high-density areas of the most population is sucking the bandwidth currently out of our network. Because they're going to be low to the ground in the small cell and we're going to do more of them, it basically densifies an area to handle the capacity that is needed for the backhaul and the bandwidth by the users.
Bill, is there any difference between this and the request that we had to give went through for Verizon and North Hadley at the Montgomery Road ropes? What's the issue there?
Well, it seems to be that this is in a, it's all land located in the business district and industrial district isn't allowed use.
Yeah, yeah. But even if it weren't allowed use, the federal law says we have to approve it, doesn't it?
No. It also says no tower should be located closer than two miles to any other such tower. There's at least two towers located in less than two miles of where you're proposing this.
Well, here's the thing. I would come forward and seek a waiver on that item.
We can't waive it.
What would be the remedy on that? Allow me to finish my point, though.
Zoning Board of Appeals.
Allow me to finish my point, though. Depends on how you classify what I'm doing. I have the right to be in the right-of-way space as a competitive local exchange carrier. I am acknowledging that it is a wireless application, but I'm not calling myself a cellular tower. It's a small cell densification project. So when confronted with this question about can't be within two miles, I would say it extends a non-conforming use. That's one argument that I've used. If it does, if it is the will of this body that it requires a waiver or something relief-related, then zoning Board of Appeals is the body.
We do not classify cellular towers.
Our towers are called wireless communication.
Okay.
So if you're a wireless communication, then you fall into the zoning bylaw.
I acknowledge the zoning bylaw. The issue that you brought up is not within two miles of an existing tower. I'm looking to waive that. I'm looking to build a utility facility, whatever you want to call it, at this location to densify that given area. And it only goes a matter of blocks. It's not a big cell tower. It's not a big eight-foot antenna. I'm looking to densify that intersection. I don't, it really is about this, too. We want to do several of these so we don't have to pay others. It's not a macro project. That's not what I need. I need a smaller facility in between these other towers. So that two-mile radius is relevant, but that two-mile radius is going like this. I need to be right here. So that's what I'm.
So there's a tower behind Stop &amp; Shop.
Yeah.
There's a tower at the public safety complex.
There's a tower inside.
A water tower.
There's a tower inside the water tower. There's a tower inside the old Quality Motel, or what it's called now.
No, those aren't towers under the definition. Those are, tower is a structure designed to facilitate the services.
Okay.
Communications facility is everything else. So the water tower and the hotel are facilities. They are not communications towers.
Okay, because they're given.
So that, I think, might be okay. We still have to check the distance from public safety and from Stop &amp; Shop.
What's the overall height it's supposed to be?
55 feet.
55 feet.
I'm sure it's more than two miles in the public safety.
And what's this two mile, who came up with that?
14.5.3 of the zoning bylaw.
Did an engineer say this is?
14.5.3 is in the zoning bylaw.
Doesn't matter where it came from.
Doesn't matter where it came from, it's there.
It is the law.
Even though it may not be.
It is the law of the town.
Now, remember.
That's a good argument for repealing.
Now, remember, this bylaw was written in 1997 and ended 1998. So it's pretty near 20 years old. And certain portions of the bylaw could be outdated.
Nobody had an iPhone yet.
I'm only telling you when the bylaw was written.
That's a good clarification, yeah.
Can we just be friendly today?
Yeah, but this is still the bylaw.
I do not want to put you past your time, you guys. You've got a busy agenda.
Yeah.
Let me pull back, take a look, and I still need to get my final authority from the Board of Selectmen. This was an informal hearing to try to get a pulse.
Right.
I think I've got a pulse and I intend to move it forward once I have the will of the body.
So you're going to have any other structures related to it?
The pole is in the ground. There's no ground space. It's typical to the pole that you see on that Mast dot up by the bridge.
Okay, so there's no little mini building next to it for any controls or anything like that?
No. The channel, you've got the antenna and you've got a couple of boxes on it. So everything is on the pole. There's no ground space.
Okay.
Dig a hole and plant it.
How does it connect? How is it powered? How does it connect?
All right. We find the power wherever it is. We either pull the power from wherever it is above ground to the facility or we trench. So either one of those is going to come out in a construction drawing. And this is a holistic design. I don't need telco, which is, you know, the internet piece. We have a small dish on it, what they call a UA relay, that's going to actually see the existing propagation from Sprint and work it that way. So it's a wireless play. It's everything seeing each other. That's why it's, the small ones amongst the big ones.
Does this go back to a thing a few years ago that I was reading about where as opposed to putting up a big, large antenna, there's a bunch of little smaller ones to transmit to each other sort of video?
Yes, that's exactly. This is what 5G is going to be all about. This is how all carriers are advancing 5G away from the big towers and the big antennas and densifying areas that need the pockets of coverage. And the other way to do that, zonability-wise, is to do little towers, little facilities.
So this is something that's been around for a little bit, was finally coming to fruition where there was a number of small towers rather close together, but they don't go way up in here because they don't need that. Is that correct?
That is exactly correct.
Okay. The bylaws, we've got to correct the bylaw.
And you can't use someone else's towers. It has to be a Sprint tower?
My business model is to not use existing tower facilities and pay their rent that they want. We want to own the facility. We have done attachments to existing wood poles, like the EverSource poles. We have agreements with them, if appropriate, to attach to the existing wood poles. I consider this a little, I consider this a little bit more appropriate to plant my own pole. And if I were to use 30 footers, 28 footers that are there, I'm going to need to plant more. So the bylaw is attractive in the way of allowing me 55 feet. I can live with that. And if I have land control for the state property Mast dot on Route 9, I will have land control to advance to a book to the body that will give me ultimately my approval for the project.
But shouldn't the towers be common carriers? Anybody could use them, subject to regulations such as natural gas, oil, and oil pipelines?
Yes, my CLEC designation allows for co-location. So I would say to you, I would, you would put a condition for co-location ability, but I think that I'm loading up the co-location ability in a 55-foot structure, steel structure, to the public safety and the cameras. But if another carrier comes and it can be pulled off structurally, they can put their equipment on my pole as well.
It just seems to me that technology is advancing so rapidly that asking to put one of these every, what, a quarter mile because you need density is going to be obsolete in no time at all. And so you're saying that you're going to need more than one of these in Hadley. Is that correct?
That's correct.
How many do you think you're going to need?
Three. That end, middle, the other end. That's what I see. They wanted this one to be tall originally, tall. I don't think that's zonable at this particular location. I think we get into a big soup there. So we're sort of moving it down, meeting the bylaw requirement of height and trying to go through the process to get what your ordinance tells me I can get. Now, another argument that I make, just to wrap it up, is the Mast dot facilities that you see coming off the highway, that the picture that I showed you, those are on Mast dot. We're paralleling that. We're mirroring that model. You can see those all the way up 91. If I come in with state land, one could argue, and I don't think I will, what was their zoning experience? Did they just come in and build that 50, 55 footer over there? That's typically what the state does. And in certain circumstances, if I'm in a cloverleaf, say Berniston, for example, I'm in a cloverleaf, they've got this tower there. I simply want to put mine on the other side of the cloverleaf to look exactly like it. But I'm going through the planning board and it seems to be that's the pathway. Just to take a look, here's my plans, but what did the state do? Did they just go in and build it? Yes.
Getting back to what I asked you, there is a tower that the competition has that you could use if you're willing to pay the rent.
No.
No? Why did you answer that question like that?
Well, we don't need that answer here.
Well.
Okay, because we're not having a hearing. This is not something we're trying to debate and discuss. This is just information.
Well, you're setting, we're setting a precedent here, too, though, Jim.
There's no such thing as a precedent.
Wow.
Zoning doesn't set precedents. Zoning doesn't set.
I know it's new. I know it's new. I've been doing this a while. I know it's new. And I'll just sit here and.
We're not trying to argue the point. You were trying to not call a public hearing and make decisions. This is just information, so.
Thank you very much for your time.
You know, you asked us some questions. You gave us some answers. And granted, the bylaw needs to be updated.
Okay, thank you very much, guys.
Okay. Thank you.
Randy? I have two A&R plans. One on River Drive in North Hadley. And the address is 346 River Drive. David Tudren and his wife Pamela. And we are creating a lot that is not a building lot in order to sell to the neighbor. And the purpose for this is to prevent another house from being built in here. David's house is up here. And there is enough frontage currently between this house lot and this house lot over here to have two 175-foot lots. But Palmasanos don't want to see that, so they worked out a deal with Tudren's that they could buy this. And they control this. Tudren's control the rest. There's no way they can have a house between the two of them unless they decide in the future to be co-conspirators and put the land back together.
So we're slicing this piece out of this piece?
Correct.
Okay.
And there is a note on it that it's not a building lot and it's to be conveyed to Palmasanos to create one undivided parcel.
This is Tudren's lot, is it?
Yes. Everybody's going to go at once?
Do you need some?
No, no, no. I'm just, I'm not going anywhere. Usually this gets very interesting when we try it this way.
I just had dinner with my family. Started serving to the left and to the right simultaneously.
You can handle this. Okay. George? Now I have one a bit more intriguing. Grand Oak Farms. Off of Bay Road. So I'm just going to spread it out and then I'll explain what's going on. About three years ago, I came before the board. Dan Mast's house, it was number 168 Bay Road. So we created a legal building lot for his house. We had some extra land in the back, which if you look at this, I'm trying to make this understandable for everybody. So the blue, the blue triangle is what was left over from a Mast's house lot. The yellow is a lot, it was a parcel on Grand Oak Farm, the original subdivision. It wasn't big enough to qualify as a building lot. So when, in 2013, I did this plan, we had the blue and the yellow together. You can see inside, there's a 150-foot square that would not fit inside the blue and the yellow. So Kathy Bemben is willing to sell to a Mast of the pink, which will allow the 150-foot square to fit in to all this. Now typically, we get concerned about further subdivision in a subdivision. I went through and found the covenants of this subdivision when it was created in 19 whatever. Anyhow, one of the, the first order of their covenant was no lot or combination of lots shall be subdivided or modified in any way for the purpose of increasing or enlarging the total number of lots upon which single-family residential structures may be constructed. I read that and I thought, okay, done deal. But then you go to the last page. The covenants and restrictions of this declaration shall run with and bind the land and shall inure to the benefit of the developers, blah, 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 until December 31, 2006. So their covenants have expired. And I know I asked the question when I did this previous plan as to whether the subdivision approval decision said anything about no further subdivision. And I feel quite certain that it, I know I talked to Bill.
My recollection is that. That was one of the very first ones that, what was the date of the subdivision?
Oh, man. 70, 87?
87.
87.
So that was the, actually the first year I was on the board. And at that time, I wasn't putting in the no further subdivision clause.
So it appears to me that this is legitimate.
Who owns the lot?
The, okay, so the yellow and the blue are owned by Debbie McFretzky and Greg O'Master. And the pink is Kathy Bemben. And she is, they're in negotiations to transfer the land. So that may not happen, but I'm told it's supposed to. If it does, great. If it doesn't, the plan is moot and doesn't matter.
So it satisfies all other requirements. You have the frontage.
Yeah.
You have the square footage.
Correct.
And you have the square able to fit in there?
Yes.
Anything legally we're missing here, Bill?
No. I think the one thing that current subdivisions have that clause about no further subdivision, but.
This one has to have expiration date on it.
Yeah, and the subdivision approval didn't have that clause either.
Okay.
From that, from that vintage.
I know, Joe, your head was too small way back then to do that. The square needs to be bigger, that's all.
The square should be bigger?
Not too hard with a computer. I love that. Those are fun.
Randy, you can explain to Mike and John about the square and.
The square. There's not one inch of extra land.
There is a little bit in the back. I pushed it about.
Where?
Do you got a magnifying glass? On this, but it's not quite six inches away from the line in the back. Usually, usually I'll make them right there.
God, boy.
This one, I said, what the heck.
No waste. Randall, no waste.
No. Sometimes you can't afford waste.
That's in case he missed the tangent of the road by a little bit. He wanted to make sure he got it. That's what I was.
No, I make sure, with the computer, it's so easy to do this stuff.
I think it did.
You say, tell it to go 150 feet this way, 150 feet that way, and connect the dots. So as long as you know how to tell it which way to go.
So you have plans for this or you just want to talk about?
No, that's, that's the plan. The mylar's here somewhere.
Very under one of you guys, right here.
Start signing.
You want the pretty pictures, Joe? Want me to take it away?
Take it.
You don't want to sign on them.
What?
Big ones.
The big ones.
What the hell do you put the little ones for?
So you can see what was going on.
Oh, I see.
Help you to understand. Help you to understand. That's all I have for A&R stuff. I was talking to you earlier, Bill, about that one on Rocky Hill Road. At the next meeting, more than likely, I'll be back with an A&R on the Wilga property on Rocky Hill Road, just past Breckenridge. There's about 11 acres in there. It's extremely wet. We're going to run into the criteria of how much upland you have to have on a lot to be legitimate. So we'll be doing some calculations relative to that.
An A&R or subdivision?
Yeah, A&R. There's no way a subdivision could win there. There's 11 acres. They can build two houses.
Who is that right behind Wilga?
Wilga. Just past Breckenridge, on the left-hand side.
So Randy did have a question about the, whether the, whether in section 5.6, Wetlands Restrictions on Building Lots. Every building lot created after the effective date shall contain one-third acre of upland if the lot is not to be soared.
One-quarter if it is.
One-quarter if it is. For upland is defined as land which is neither defined as wetlands nor located within 100 feet of such wetlands. So the issue that Randy has is there is upland, but it's not contiguous.
And I think, Bill, I went back to my office and looked, and I had somebody looking at this site, trying to get three lots out of it. And that's when I would have had to get really creative with the upland, but I think there's not going to be a problem with just the two. But in, in the future, if that were to come up, is, does it, does the upland have to be contiguous?
This was a request that was done by Alexandra Dawson Russell's home when she was on the Conservation Commission. And I'm trying to think what her interpretation of that was. I believe, I believe it was contiguous.
I thought it was...
I suggested as long as the buildable site could contain the structure, driveway, septic system.
The only place that I could see where this may have applied is the one that was on Farm Lane, where they had pieces, they tried to get a building lot out of that that was right below the...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Florence Palmquist Lane.
Yes. And I believe, I'm trying to think on that one. They had pieces throughout, but nothing was joined. And I think the determination back then was that they didn't have a buildable lot. I'm pretty sure that they had a third of an acre in pieces, because that had, that was several acres, that lot.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it was.
And I believe that ended up being not buildable because they didn't have a contiguous piece.
You might want to talk to Conservation.
Yeah, that would, that would be more their interpretation, because that's really where it came from.
All right, well, I don't need it for this upcoming one, but, and if we, if I get one that's going to be that tight, I don't even want to deal with it anyhow. I mean, that's getting ridiculous.
That's, that would be, that'd be like putting really together, they would, they would be using your AutoCAD for square footers to a bigger, big, big degree.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we should be, should be, we should be clear on that.
That's it for general?
Okay, we have two continuations for this. It's all for general information. We have two continuations. I'm assuming most of the people here may be for the...
One Eversource, two Valley Building.
Mostly here for Valley Building, or Eversource? Eversource?
I'm not, I was actually, I just had to drop off some butter's labels for you guys. I was here a couple of weeks ago about taproom. Anyway, I'm happy to wait. I just came in late.
Okay, great. Well, let's go, which one do we want to go with? Which one is first? We have Eversource on our list first. I think that's got fewer issues probably in front of it than the Valley Building. So continuation of the Eversource. I think we got a couple of, one with screening. I think really that was the big one.
Do you have the ECU?
Yeah, this is all right. It takes a second.
Sorry?
Sign-in sheet?
No, this is reservations for the walk-in session.
So much for that.
The solar plan fell over.
Yeah. Let's hope that's not the trend.
Good point. I've got three copies of these. This was the ortho photo, just a... So first of all, just to introduce myself again, Mike Gagman, with Malon McDrum representing Eversource. Since the last hearing, I believe it was on the 21st of February, there was a couple of requests that were made by the commission, as well as at that point, we are still amidst going through review by the Conservation Commission. So first and foremost, what I'd like to present, which I just handed out reduced copies, is the ortho plan. It actually shows the distances from the nearest residences. So essentially, and again, just to give you an orientation for everybody else that's in the room, South Maple Street off to the left, Moody Bridge Road to the north of the site here. And we picked out, there were three primary residences that are proximal to the site. There is a number up at the intersection of Moody Bridge Road and South Maple. That house is about 770 feet. The closest of butter, which is actually to the northeast, is about 617 feet. And then the last of butter, which is at the southwest corner down here, is about 823 feet. The other request that was made was to enhance the plantings such that we could further screen the facility from view, particularly from South Maple. And that's actually shows up on the plan that's in front of you as well, too. So what we did is we extended, if you recall the previous plan, we had stopped the plantings roughly in this area here, along the south fence line. So what we did is we extended those plantings all the way out to the corner here. And then likewise to the north, to screen the facility from view from the north, we extended the line of plantings along this line here. Essentially, we maximize the available area to stay without, to stay out of the wetlands resource area. This plan was presented to Conservation Commission because obviously the, the question was whether or not that plantings could be placed within the upland area, and particularly within the 35-foot no-bill. And that didn't appear to be a significant issue with Conservation. Speaking of Conservation, the notice of intent hearing was closed on March 28th. And we just received our order of conditions via email this evening from Janice Stone. So other than that, those are essentially the noteworthy changes that have been made to the plan. In addition, I should mention, too, I believe that the plan that you saw previously, there was a question about stormwater management. And we did, and again, this, this was all presented to the Conservation Commission, recognizing stormwater management as regulated under the Act. And we had revised the analysis such that we looked at the entire site as the contributing area to Moody Bridge Road Culver to the north here. And essentially by, in layman's terms, because all of the area from the site essentially contributes to the intermittent stream that stops roughly in this area. When we analyzed the discharge at Moody Bridge Road Culver as a result of the proposed conditions on the site, there was virtually no change in peak flow. Just because the, the swale that runs along the eastwardly side of the site is very flat. It gets very wide, particularly out here in the meadow, and it has a capability of dampening the flows significantly. So we were able to omit or remove those small pocket basins that we had shown previously. It was, they were actually questioned by DEP whether or not they were necessary. And, you know, we concluded through the further analysis that they weren't. So, be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Total site is 30 acres?
Yes.
And the solar panels...
About 31 acres.
31 acres?
Yep.
And solar panels will cover...
The active project area is about 4.8 acres.
Can we just remind us what the capacity is of the site?
PW.
Okay.
Yep, I've got that in my notes somewhere. It's just about 1 megawatt. It's actually 0.9.
The bylaws states that large-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems and a pertinent structure shall be adequately screened from view from public ways and neighboring properties with vegetation or behind other existing structures. I noticed that one of the fields put in on Mill Valley Road had plantings, as you call them, plantings. And it certainly doesn't adequately screen that field from anything. I mean, those, those trees or whatever were planted there might grow up in 10 years to adequately, adequately screen. I don't think the bylaws says in 10 years. It says immediately. How do you plan to address that?
These plantings on this site, we intend to, at, at planting, they're going to be about 6 to 8 feet high, which is about the same height of the fence. One of the things that Eversource would, and, and not to speak from them, is that they would maintain those plantings for the duration of the project. And one of the things that we look at is we just, you know, particularly, you know, from this view and also to the north, if you notice, we actually do like a double staggered row. So that unlike having a single row of plantings where, you know, you'll have a tree and a tree, and you've got, you know, this space where you can see right through in between, we actually stagger the planting so that effectively it creates that natural barrier. So that's why we provided the, the double row of plantings along each area.
How far between trees?
About 10 to 12 feet, roughly.
Is the one in middle, so they're...
They're, they're like five foot on center? What are you talking about? The center tree to center tree?
Yeah. I think we actually have, if you look at our planting schedule on the legend sheet, we actually specify... Yeah, so the, the, particularly the firs that are specified are, I'm sorry, are eight feet in diameter. So I would expect those are going to probably, and I'm saying approximately, six feet on center when they're planted. Again, what that will do is that will allow them to grow full so that you'll get overlap in the branches. But one of the things that you don't want to do is plant the, the trees too close together because they will actually smother themselves.
What kind of speech, species of a tree?
Actually, we got several types. We've got Fraser firs. We've got white firs, blue spruce. We also have some mountain laurel planted in there as well, and some dogwoods. So it's, it's a mix set of vegetation.
Well, I'd rather see something that's going to be green all year round. A mountain laurel is not green all year round.
I think that's just along the front to kind of make it look a little more natural instead of like a green wall.
The green's going to be behind it?
The firs will be green all year round.
Yeah, the, the mountain laurels are just in front, just to sort of break it up visually a little bit so it's not just green wall.
How high is the highest?
Panel sticking out of the ground?
About seven feet. At, at the back of the panel. And the fence is going to be eight feet.
I should think they put like eight-foot trees right about it.
It said six to eight feet.
Well, six, no, this panel's seven foot.
Yeah, same. Not six feet, it must be eight feet.
You have a question, Board? Any questions, anybody in the audience?
Yes, I do. John Rowe in 10 South Maple Street. So my house is located south of you. It's the large house that is just off the map. Did you consider this house that's right above here? That looks, that would look face directly into the panel? Not only will it be, have an industrial feel and a, and a farmland on glare?
There's no glare.
There's no glare on these panels?
If you find, if you find a solar panel with glare, whoever put them in wants to know, because, I'm not going to be wise to that yet.
Sure.
But the reason there's no glare is because they want all the light energy absorbed. They don't want to reflect anything. So if you find someplace for the solar panels that are reflecting, they want to know about it because they got shorted.
Okay.
So how far are you requesting some fencing plantings?
I'll be looking directly into that.
I would, I would think that the, the, the trees in front would pretty much screen it.
No.
No, no.
Well, he's up high. You can't address that.
Yeah, you can.
Well, he could put, he could put...
On his north, north boundary.
He could put the trees that, that side as well.
Well, he's up high there. Wouldn't, the only way you do it is to put screening on his north boundary. So he's looking down. Those trees there, they would have to be 80 feet tall to him to block that view.
You would have to put something on, you would have to put something on my, on the north side of my property.
We, we, as a planning board, we do not have authority to go that route.
I, I beg the difference on that because it's...
Guys, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to check my investments somehow.
And we're not, but I'm not aware that we have authority to request something on somebody else's property.
No, but would you be satisfied if they put some screening on on the south side of their solar farm?
There's already trees. There's a whole line of trees.
That's not going to cover the mustard. No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is up to the right.
Yeah, his, his house is up on a, on a little bit of a rise where, to John's point, those trees would have to be very, very tall. They would end up, they would end up shadowing the panel for that.
He won't live long enough to outgrow those trees.
Definitely not.
Yeah.
This will have an impact on the value of my house. The house was designed...
I certainly welcome your comments. You're the first, I think, citizen of Hadley to truly come here and talk about what this is doing to the nature of Hadley.
It is a commercial, this is a, a, a commercial business in a farmland. My, my house was designed around the landscape. It will have a significant impact to the value of the house.
You perhaps heard my comments, take the paradise and throw it a parking lot. This is what they're doing.
Exactly. No question about this.
Well, Eversource agreed to put a barrier on his northern boundary line to screen between his house and that. See, it's elevated. Let me ask that question.
Let Eversource answer that.
Without knowing the topography, I don't know what we could install that would appease him. I mean, if we could put a small row of trees, you know, portion of his, on his property, we might consider that. But then once we plant them, then we wouldn't be able to maintain them because it's not our property, you know what I mean? But if you're 100 feet over us, there's literally nothing we can do. Obviously, this complies with... Obviously, this complies with the bylaw, I mean, you can't, you're trying to screen that.
I think the bylaw proves that this is not a proper site for a solar field in Hadley, there's plenty of other ones, because you cannot adequately screen this from neighboring properties. And Mr. Earl's house is, as far as I'm concerned, a neighboring property. It doesn't say abiding property.
Yeah, I know, if you were living there and you spent a million dollars on the house and somebody's going to put this big gigantic solar field in there, you'd be up in arms too. I know I wouldn't. And I feel for him, he's got a beautiful house there, a beautiful landscape, and this is not going to add to his landscape, it's going to take away.
I don't see any reason why.
No perceived place for the field.
So, the specific wording of the bylaws, shall be adequately screened from view from public ways and neighboring properties with vegetation. So, I don't think that precludes us with Mr. Earl's consent from requiring the screening be located on his property.
I mean, if it's amenable to the property owners, I guess that would bring it into a different category.
Then you don't want to put it on his property, plant eighty-foot trees there.
Well, that's not a reasonable solution.
Well, I mean, it's view. So, and the only way you can break that view is either eighty-foot trees here or smaller trees on his northern property.
Do you think you would have built that house there if you had a solar field as far away from you?
Not that kind of house.
No.
Are you kidding?
You know, does Eversource, gives them a right to just go into neighborhood and ruin people's evaluation and just do what they want to do? I'm not, I'm supporting the neighbors and the local people that are here.
Supreme Court law said a corporation is people, but in this decision, but I think you get your point, Johnny.
Thank you.
Well, the screening, I mean, you could put little taller trees on the southern side of the property where there is no screening now, that would hide it a little bit.
No, not from the height that he's at. So, how much higher are you than that, twenty feet?
Excuse me?
Is your house about twenty feet, thirty feet higher than the field?
Roughly.
Yeah, that would, from that view, that would be way more than?
You can't, you can't put that tree down by that array, it's going to be between, on his northern property.
Yeah. You can't, you, trees that big couldn't be transplanted.
No.
And to Mike's point, in his lifetime, he probably wouldn't be hiding them.
And if you look at the solar array of the farm that's down, you know, that you just mentioned, it doesn't even screen the fence, never mind, it'll be ten years before you even screen the fence.
Yeah, I mean, the one they just did, they put trees like this.
Yeah.
A woodchuck one, you wouldn't even hide a woodchuck running around in there.
Okay, so that leads to a couple of questions. First, do you think, Mr. Earl, that you might find a line of trees along your northerly boundary line a suitable solution?
Along my north?
Along your boundary?
My north boundary?
Yeah. So the next question is, would Eversource consider planting them there?
We would have to look at the details, see where it is and how much, how much planting would be adequate, something we have to take back and take a look at.
That's, so that's fine. Okay.
You know, they could maybe do like we did on the annex, the library annex, want to put balloons the height of those, that solar array, and out the outer perimeter, then you can, you can see, you know, that, exactly where that is.
Question would be, let's assume that Eversource and Mr. Earl come to an agreement that trees are adequate. Would we still require trees on the southern?
Absolutely, from the road.
Southerly fence line?
What about all the people that are driving on the road?
I'm just raising a question.
That would be to the west, they do have trees indicated to the west.
I think what Jim is proposing, will we allow them to swap some of these trees for trees along the Earl property line?
I wouldn't.
I wouldn't. Okay, I'm just posing a question.
I take it that no, nothing's come to the further discussions with the conservation outfit, where they come?
Well, this is what's before us.
Yeah, I know.
So, our next meeting is in two weeks, would that be enough time for everyone to get together and see if you can reach an agreement?
I won't be here, and I'd kind of like to be here for the vote.
One month?
Perfect.
That would be the May?
Third Tuesday of May, I forgot my calendar.
What's the date of that?
May sixteenth would be the meeting.
Okay.
We've already got, well, you're not, that's, we've already got two other solar hearings with Mr. Goulet on that night, but that's fine. This won't take long, it'll either be, it'll either be, we can do it or we can't do it, then the vote will be accordingly.
Do we have the public hearing on the zoning articles on the second?
Yes, that will be, we also have Larry coming in.
I think, just throwing this out there, but originally we only had the screening after that first lobe. If we could take that screening after the first lobe and agree to put it somewhere else, I think we could move forward tonight, since it's the same number of trees, it wouldn't change our economics, so if we could agree to move that. Originally, we only added to the first lobe because we were trying to block his property, but if it's not working to block his property and we move it closer than, I mean, if you're looking at cars driving by, they're not going to be looking, this is five acres, they're not going to be looking, you know, that far in as you drive by.
What do you think they're going to wa, they've got?
Tunnel vision, they're just going to look here? People look out in the fields?
No, this is a scenic byway.
People are parked here, taking pictures, out into the field and out all over the place here.
Painters get out there, paint oils.
All the time, this is not, this is not something to play with.
Yeah.
People are here all the time looking out that way, and that's right there.
Here's our property, like I said, we're trying to meet with us, goals towards renewable energy, I mean?
Well, that's, that's?
It's cost-doing business.
This is, you know, perhaps you, this was a bad purchase, but?
We've had the property for three years.
So, you want me to feel sorry for you?
No, I'm just saying, we didn't buy this building, we just said we didn't do hunting for it.
Just for the record, this is a special permit, which means you need a super majority, you need four or five members voting in favor.
Yeah.
And that's just a comment, that you need to satisfy at least four of the members to get an affirmative vote.
I see no problem voting for this contingent on Mr. Earl and Eversource coming into an agreement that he accepts. And the way that plan is now, I would accept that with an eight-foot tree, minimum eight foot, right around that perimeter that they show on this print. And the only question here, an argument, is John Earl, and if he's satisfied with Eversource, then they could proceed. Do you have a problem with that, John?
No. There might be a middle ground, to your point, that maybe you don't need to have a double-stacked line of trees all the way across if some of those could, but I think you have to work out whether it would even be feasible.
I want to make sure it's a good barrier.
Given the rate increase Eversource requested from the state, they could put three or four layers of trees in there, no problem.
So, let's focus on the issues before the planning board. Will you two exchange contact information so that you can get together and work something out, or if not?
You know, it's become clear that Hadley is, as the location of, that people want to put solar panels for obvious reasons, we've got open space, and I think we have to start looking closer and closer where we're going to make these requirements today. Look what happened on Mill Valley Road, they planted trees this high, I'm going to be dead and gone before they adequately screen that property.
That's done with them, I'm going to joke. You got it.
Okay, the hearing will be continued to May sixteenth at seven fifteen.
Next up is the shady lawn two-lot subdivision. And we have a decision from the zoning board of appeals. That's about it. We vote against it. I'm going to vote against the McWhort. It's a senior file, someplace. We're here for? I wish you hadn't said that, I want you to vote against it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a decision for the zoning board of appeals dated February, well, the hearing was dated February ninth, the decision was dated April eleventh. And the zoning board of appeals granted the petitioner, Peter Gilenus, the variance for modification to an existing sub property to divide. Let me see. How was exactly worded? The grant you request a modification to the existing variance based upon the following findings, and it's basically to create two lots.
I'm not, I'll just make a note, I'm not participating in the decision, I'm just taking notes.
Okay. So, I believe the outstanding item for the very small, well, there was actually several small, several small reasons, things, and that was about, whether this could be subdivided, that was a big one, that had been decided, and then there was a bunch of small issues on the actual design of the property.
Yes, sir. So, when we left, when we last met, I gave you these plans to look at, and we stopped our conversation because of the zoning board issue. The zoning board, like Jimmy just said, we're just going to create a second lot here. So now, the question becomes, the width of the right-of-way and the width of the quote-unquote "road" which is in effect a driveway. So, to refresh your memories, the blue is thirty-four feet wide in the back and not quite thirty-four feet wide at the road due to, I had to put a curb in it to avoid a tree. So, anyhow, the blue is to be conveyed to the butter, Mr. Kosher. He's using his property right now, right up to the boundary line, and he would like a buffer. This land is not to be sold to Mr. Kosher, it is to be given to Mr. Kosher. As the road, quote-unquote "road," will be serving one house, it seems to me that I have a thirty-foot wide right-of-way with a sixteen-foot wide driveway proposed, and that is more than adequate to service one house. Now, the last time we met, there were many more butters than there are this evening, but there was a common consensus that they didn't want to see a big, you know, a twenty-two foot wide driveway there with a cul-de-sac on the end of it. So, this lot is set up so that the road doesn't have a cul-de-sac in it, there's enough frontage to satisfy the bylaw, I've got the driveway created so that there's a turnaround that emergency vehicles can utilize to get, you know, they don't have to back out all the way onto the road. And again, because it's only serving one lot, it's more than?
Where's that turnaround ready?
Right, yeah, right there.
So they're driving here and back out there?
Yes, yeah, and that's, you know, it's just?
Fire chief happy with that?
You gave all this stuff to the fire chief, I believe, and I don't think there was an issue with it. I don't recall hearing that there was.
Did he put any hearing reading?
I have nothing from the fire chief.
No.
They were all given plans to this. Mr. Kosher's the only one we're going to respond from. No, we have nothing from the police, or fire, or anybody.
Does that mean we assume they are fine with it, or we assume that they forgot?
Normally, they've given adequate time, and if they don't respond, we, it's assumed to be okay by default.
But this was postponed and postponed, but?
Yeah, and in their, if you would defend, this is similar to other hammerheads that we've had around, it's not an unusual thing.
You know, I, because it's fire protection, I, not only for that, but for the neighbors, I certainly would want his comment, either he accepts it or doesn't accept it. Is there a hydrant somewhere on the end here?
Right at the end of the street.
One out, right out at the, in the middle street, Johnny.
Right here?
Right there, right there.
Okay. That's there now?
Yes, yep.
How close is that to the road?
To?
To the road?
To the, or is it going to be to the driveway?
Be five feet or so?
Yeah, maybe six, seven, something like that.
Same as on the road.
I don't think that's really any different than the flag lot that Ray Brown lives on right beside it where you pull up and, you know, you can either pull in and still back around, there's no difference in that. My only concern with this whole thing was is that with what we're allowing in that neighborhood and/or in many neighborhoods here, is that what we're not saying is that if it's a single family dwelling and it's a property that's going to be sold, it's basically a small flag lot, and it's going to be a resident, what I was concerned with was that a great big old house is going to get built there, you know, two stories high, there's going to be five bedrooms in it and three bathrooms in it, and what's to stop that? And oh, wow, we can't really sell this because nobody wants to buy this expensive of a house on this tiny little lot, and so I guess we'll just have to rent it. And that does affect our neighborhood for a lot of people. So, a single-family dwelling, small people are buying it, they're moving into the neighborhood.
That was, Jim, that was recorded, is supposed to be owner-occupied in the ZBA decision. Is it recorded there? Because sometimes they?
The property in the back shall only be used as an owner-occupied, single-family home and will be sold by Mr. Gil, Mr. Gilenus.
Okay.
That's recorded right in the?
Okay.
It's in the decision?
Right, that's right in the severance?
In that single-family house?
And who would?
This is an existence, this is a, this is a, this is a variance, so it'll be a?
Owner-occupied?
Owner-occupied, single-family.
And they can't put an accessory apartment there?
And who would enforce that?
That, that is correct.
They can't put a?
Cannot, cannot. Single-family.
And that's going to be listed in our finding?
That's listed in the ZBA's finding, we can make that part of our decision as well.
Your finding is always relative, it pertains to every other board that has anything to do with this, so that will become part of it automatically.
Well, I just want to make sure there's?
No, I get it, no, I understand.
Because there was a large section of neighbors that were not happy with this. And what they said when they went to, I didn't go to the ZBA meeting when the first project went through, but what I got out of them is that they were only supposed to build this one, not two. But the ZBA never wrote that down, is that?
So they went, they claimed they went through the video of it and that was not mentioned. I thought it was as well.
The video?
They, the?
That was recorded.
This, the public hea, the hearing for the variance of the nursing home was recorded according to them. And they couldn't, that was, they viewed it and they didn't say anything about those comments.
So, by our zoning laws, they can put, the person that owns this can put a subdivision here by right, is that correct?
Correct. After the zoning board of appeals hearing, they are allowed to have a subdivision by right. Now, the question that Randy's putting before us is, are we going to require to follow them the true definition of a subdivision regulation of a wider road and a hammerhead or cul-de-sac at the end of the road, or are we going to give them? Or are we going to give them relief and have them build a driveway, make it a private road, and the town will not maintain it? It'll be privately maintained? So that's the question before us tonight. A regular subdivision, this would not even qualify as a flag lot because there's, in the old days, because there's not enough square footage in where the house is going to be built. So it's a...they're asking for a lot of relief. If I have to have an opinion now, I...we do have wiggle rule in our subdivision regulations saying that we don't have to follow the letter of the law of a subdivision. However, we do have discretion. You're asking for a smaller road, a narrower road. I would like to see a cross-section of the road. Is it going to be just tire and gravel? Is it going to be a certain amount of gravel compacted? Is it going to be a significant road other than just a gravel driveway? So I would like to see a cross-section of what the road is going to be, where the drainage will go, as any other situation when we used to do the old flag lots or a very small subdivision. So I would be inclined to make it a private road, smaller as you're requesting. Mr. Kozier would get his square footage of 30 feet. And just to feel comfortable, I would like to see a letter from Fire Chief Spankable so we can incorporate that into our decision. And I know Jim had a different opinion, so I'll quit talking.
Jim's opinion is that we're giving up an awful lot just so this guy can...the developer can save money. And every other very small subdivision that we've approved, the town has gotten something for it in the terms of land that would be undeveloped. And in the case of this, the town is getting nothing. We're just getting a road we don't have to plow. Big to me, that's nothing. That's not a win-win situation.
I know you say we don't set precedent here, but have we ever granted this situation and not gotten anything back?
No.
No.
Okay.
Good. Yeah, but I mean, what about this lot here? This brown lot?
That's a flag lot.
That's a flag lot.
Well...
That's the old flag lot.
That's a completely different situation.
But I mean, this is a subdivision. If they can do it by law, then how can you stop it?
I'm not stopping it. I'm not intending to stop it.
He's not going to stop it.
I'm not intending...I'm not stopping it.
Why should somebody be bribed or forced to pay money?
The question before us is a wide subdivision regulation... According to our subdivision regulations?
Right.
Or is it going to be a driveway?
The neighbors don't want it. Nobody wants it. On paper, it's...he can...
Even on paper, it would not be...it would be a paper road. Even how many...even on every other small subdivision, it shows on paper a cul-de-sac or a hammerhead type turnaround. But it's only built normally as a private drive. And that's my only comment here that we're...
Well, I can show that there's a plan somewhere up there that shows a cul-de-sac. If I do that, then Kozier loses a bunch of land.
That's not my concern.
I understand that's not your concern. I also...I mean, I hear what you're saying. And it's not...this is not about let's save some money to make this more profitable. It's about what makes sense for the neighborhood. Do you put a 26-foot-wide road in there to service one lot just because? Or do you go the other way and say, yeah, okay, I get it. This is going in anyhow. Let's make it more aesthetic for the neighborhood.
Mr. Jelenus doesn't live in the primary property, does he?
He does not.
If he were living there, would he be proposing this, do you think? That's...I know it's a hypothetical question.
I would say yes.
He would be proposing that.
I would say yes.
That's not...
But the problem is, Randy, if...I was thinking somebody's going to say, we're setting a precedent here. And if you ever come back with one more of these...
No, I understand.
You understand...
I understand exactly what's going on.
And I'm speaking to two men of integrity. I admire your integrity. I admire Jim's integrity. And I'm willing to compromise on this one. And it bothers me a little bit because there's a lot that we're giving up as a town. And I hope we're not setting a precedent.
What are you giving up in a town?
We don't set precedents, seriously.
I'll use where I live as an example. Now, I...this was 15 years ago. But I've got a piece of land that was originally approved as a flag lot, and the permit expired. And my client said, what do I do? So I could make two lots fit on that property based on the subdivision regulations, ugly as all get out. None of the neighbors wanted to see it. So when we came to the board, all the neighbors said, look, don't make them put a cul-de-sac. Don't make them put the wide road because it just doesn't fit in the neighborhood. It's a private road now, and everybody's happy. It certainly costs less money to build it than it would have if it was a regular subdivision road. But the point was not about the money at the end of the day. The point was, how does it fit into the neighborhood?
Right.
And what makes the most sense?
How's it going to work?
So the reality here is this...if you put a subdivision road in, it's short enough that it's not going to cost more money to build it than the lot is worth. And that's typically...if I get people come to me, I want to do a subdivision. I want to just...I look at, all right, you've got to put in X amount of feet of road. It's going to cost you this much money. You've got this many lots. It's not worth doing it because it costs more money to build the road than you're going to get out of the lots. In this situation, he's going to be able to build the road to subdivision standards and still be able to sell the lot and make some money. Granted, it won't be as much money, but it doesn't fit in the neighborhood. That's the point.
Comparing your subdivision to this, there was one lot put in and a whole lot of land not developed out of it.
No, not mine. Two lots put in, and everything was eaten up. We didn't have anything on that one. There was no extra land on that one. It was just...again, I showed you guys, I can do two lots. I can put a cul-de-sac in. It's stupid looking, and the neighbors all hated it. And we came to you guys and said, look, let's do this. Everybody would be happy. And that's what we did. And again, we're not...I'm not saying you set a precedent there.
I thought there was land saved on it.
No, there wasn't on that one. My point is that you realize it didn't make sense to do it. And so you agreed to make it a 16-foot-wide private road. And that's...it's no different here. It's even a bigger situation here because it's basically downtown. And I realize that you guys are caught between a rock and a hard place. The state law says you have to allow it to happen in some way, shape, or form. You can't say no. So knowing that, it seems to me that it makes sense that, okay, we don't like this, but what's best for the neighborhood is, you know...
Well, you know, I think he did a great job with the old folks home there. It looked very attractive. Hopefully, he's going to continue that in vain when he puts his house up here.
Now...okay. So need road standards? Go ahead and talk to the fire chief. Anything else?
Cross-section of what the road is going to be?
That's what I mean. That's what I mean about the road standards.
I only want to say also is that when you look at this area of Middle Street and you look at the way the houses, the planning that went into this town hundreds of years ago, my house is 1851, these lots were laid out. They were bigger lots. They were nice lots. Most of them are several acres, two acres, three acres. You know, and we're...now we're starting to pick away and put a little house here. And, you know, if Kozier gets that other land that he's not buying, is being given to him, is that a building lot also off of the other?
No.
With a variance? You know, what does happen there?
Can Kozier knock down that barn and put a...
No.
He can't subdivide that lot?
No, he's tried that numerous times. It will not work.
Okay.
And even with that...
Tried numerous times because you didn't know the land behind it.
It won't ha...it's still not doable.
But what this land, you can't do it?
No.
But you look at the beautiful homes that are built behind it, the little cul-de-sacs, the separation of the house and the stuff. You don't have that here.
How big will Kozier's...
This is a red thumb in the middle of this piece.
How big will Kozier's property be with this afterwards?
So are you speaking for or against it?
You know, I'm mostly... And I know I can't leave you this, but the Browns are not here. They are opposed to this. They're on their way back from Florida. They'll be back either late tonight or tomorrow sometime. And they called and said that they are not...this house...
It's about...it's a hundred and forty feet.
They built their house. They put it at an angle so that they had a lot, the open view, and everything else. Much like this guy. And, you know, they've got a beautiful home back there. It's set up. They have two and a half acres. They did the flag lot properly. They have a beautiful long driveway. And now they're going to have a house right in their...
Then why didn't they buy the land?
And why?
Yeah, but where...once the Zoning Board of Appeals gave them permission to build it, we cannot deny it. Now, the only question that I argue about...
Well, if you can't say, let's put in a whole road then. Put in a road and a cul-de-sac and see how much land we've got left there to build a house on.
No.
It's doable.
Okay.
I don't want to see that.
Couple of notes to make, Mr. Dwyer, for the decision. When we do vote in who it's going to be.
You got the drainage all figured out on this?
There was nothing...I was treating it as a driveway. So Joe wants to see that, so we'll have to accomplish something.
Owner-occupied, single-family dwelling, no accessory apartment. Okay.
This is all in the area for recharge area.
Yes. 200 feet of frontage, 40,000 square feet is required.
That's the water section.
And...
Okay. So this is going to go in here. Parcel A...
So you checked this out, Jimmy? He can't go here and...
No, no, no.
Huh?
He's got 140 feet of depth. He's got almost 400 feet of frontage. Okay? He can't subdivide it. He doesn't meet any kind of zoning, but he's got enough...
No, no, I'm totally fine with this working. I'm totally fine saying I can't stop this.
Okay, so I may be...
Go ahead.
Yes.
Put that...put that cul-de-sac in.
With that.
And build a house back there.
Okay, so wait a minute. Let me finish this.
And nobody's going to want to buy that one. Those damn plots there.
What he's saying was with this...
It's almost an acre. So you're shooting yourself.
What do you have in the front? You know, you've got a column in front of it.
So there's obviously going to be sewer.
Yes.
And what size water main you can put in?
The...whatever the town's going to require for the state. It should be a one-inch.
Yeah.
Little accessory apartment.
One-inch, why?
Get the...get that...
Why would you put a one-inch line in the street?
All right, so you want to know what size water line?
Yeah, what would the town require? Just so you can have it.
Sort of your house.
Probably three-quarter to one-inch. Okay. Just for the record, Randy, I'm also going to put a couple of other conditions in addition to the zoning board. One of them is that parcel A that is to be conveyed to Mr. Kozier is not to be further subdivided. That way, they cannot make two building lots out of Mr. Kozier's property at any time in the future.
Gotcha.
Even though he'll have...
I'll put a note on there.
Right. Okay. Parcel or lot number one will be owner-occupied, single-family dwelling, no accessory apartment, nor home occupation.
Okay, so lot one, single-family?
Just what the zoning board put in, a homeowner-occupied, single-family dwelling. We're also going to put a clause in there, no accessory apartment nor home occupation.
But doesn't the...isn't it of right by right, as you say, that you can have a home occupation?
No, not by right.
You can't have a plumber there? Plumber can't work out of that house?
Yes. Yes. A home...the way the bylaw is written...
Thanks for the clarification.
Make sure I put the right words in there.
Why are you worried about that?
I don't want customers coming...I don't care if it's a plumber.
Yeah, right.
I don't just want...I don't want customers coming there.
Gotcha, gotcha.
I'm not for sure. I'm not sure if the right word is...I want to see what the bylaw calls it.
Well, isn't there a home occupation business right next door, Barstool?
Yeah, but he's on East...he's right on the street. He's not going to be going and buying accessory apartments.
You want me to put, Jimmy, or a home occupation that involves customers coming to...
Home business.
Home business?
Wait a minute.
He's reading the fine print.
Sixty...page 20...oh, section 20. Page 60.
Page what?
60.
Page 60.
60.
60, six-zero. See, I don't care if it's a trade that's conducted without customers, like a plumber or electrician where they have no customers, nobody coming to visit them. It's not what I'm worried about. It's something where they have...
Well, you're not writing up a decision tonight.
No. I just want to make...well, yeah, we've got time to make the right call for that.
All right, and the next...at the next meeting, I'll have some of this stuff on the plan so you can look at it. And if there's stuff you need to add, because it's not going to... You're not going to sign it that night if it gets approved. You're not going to sign it that night anyhow, so...
Okay. You want to continue this for the...will you be able to get this stuff in two weeks?
I don't know.
I'm just asking you.
Yeah, I know. I'm thinking if I can ask for a little engineering work here. Although I did have Spac do it as a whole.
Or you want to make it...you want to make it... Well, we could do the 16th, but it'd be a long meeting.
Yeah, I think the two solar ones are going to go pretty quickly.
Yeah.
I would prefer that, do it on the 16th.
16th.
Because I'm leaving for a week on Thursday, so that's going to cut a bunch of it.
Randy, what's the length of this road to the house?
About 400... This...from here to here is 380 feet. So from here to here is probably 250...
200 yards, 207 to the corner of the house.
To the house.
So 250, 260, maybe. All right, so we're continuing to May 16?
Yes. Fire review, road design.
All right, so I will see Spankable, myself, and talk to him, show him what's going on, tell him what you guys are after.
Okay.
Work out if he's got a problem with it. I'll change it according to what he wants and make sure he sends a letter to you guys.
Okay.
All right? You want any copies of that, or you want me to just read them from next time?
No, because we already got those anyways, right?
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay. Let's see. We've got an invoice to pay for the Daily Hampshire Gazette for... $149.80 that wasn't paid. Must have been from a previous bill that wasn't paid. $149.80, legal notice. They paid $149.80 but didn't pay the other one. I thought they had paid it. I guess not.
Why don't we approve it and send it in with the note to check, verify whether this has been paid?
We might've just missed the, uh, billys.
Okay. Motion in second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, then we, we did a letter from the Park and Rec Commission regarding Zatirica Park. Very simple note that says, dear members of the zoning B, ZBA, please be advised that the Park and Rec Commission formally voted to reaffirm its determination to the status of Zatirica Park as a park, and that it has not been formally decommissioned by the Park and Rec Commission per Master in the Laws, Chapter 45, Section 5. Please be advised that the Park and Rec Commissioners shall have the authority given by, to the mayor, Alderman, Stakman, Road Commissioners, et cetera, under such, said jurisdiction. Thank you for your attention, the Park and Rec Commission. So I guess that all of this work that the Zatirica Park Group is planning needs to be approved by the Park and Rec Commission, as well as other boards that have authority, before it can be done, anything can be done to it. That just for our...
Isn't that, uh, letter referenced that someone said they discontinued it as a park, and it's not?
Possibly. I didn't get in, I didn't look at all the details.
I thought someone said that somewhere, I don't know where I heard that.
Um, at our next meeting on May 2nd, we will have a review of the public hearing on, in the zoning amendments that are gonna be on the town meeting warrant for the 4th, which is two days later.
Speaking of that, um, the town council reviewing the warrant articles came back with some comments about the recreational marijuana moratorium that we had proposed, which was based on something that the town administrator had put together. Uh, they said that they thought that their model article was better. So, um, because the warrant was just about to close, I put in proper numbering and said, send, send it over. But I would, I think we should just take a vote to substitute this for the prior text.
So, move. Any discussion?
I'll second it.
What, what did he say about that, the other language?
Yeah, well, he said, among, among other things, the other language didn't even have a definition of medical marijuana, or recreational marijuana.
Uh huh.
And, um, that was, that was the main thing. There was also a comment that we had a clause about, uh, dealing in, or, or, um, there was a vague clause in there. And basically what David Nixon had done was to take the medical marijuana moratorium from three or four years ago and just substitute the words, uh, recreational marijuana. So this has, is a more detailed preamble. But the base, the basic, what we had in the prior text is basically what appears in 21.3, which just says, for the reasons set forth above, town adopts a temporary moratorium. So, uh, the preamble's a lot of, well, figured, town council handed it to us.
Same thing with a lot more words, that's fine.
So the motion is to substitute, uh, text for Article 21.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Then we got a draft of the town warrant. I don't know if anybody else printed it out. And we're not at the end this time. We're next to the end.
We're next to the end, but...
What is, what is Article 25?
It's a petition article.
What is it, though?
So I, I had a discussion with the select, with some members of the select board and the town administrator about how town business should go before petition articles. I guess they listened this time.
Article 25...
It's to get money out of politics, or something like that.
Article 25, here's the planning board, so they're off by one number on their ruling there, so 26. Oh, this is a, okay, this is a, limiting, political donations and the limit of influence of money in politics, this is... Okay.
Do you got anything for Sanctuary Town?
No.
Not yet?
No, not yet.
So I heard you're gonna petition Stakman. Make this a Sanctuary Town?
It already is.
I won't pass that one with it.
It is? It already is.
Okay, I'm gonna make a, uh, motion to authorize town council to execute a stipulation of dismissal in the matter of Burkum versus Tana Hadley and others. That was the accessory apartment on Sylvia Heights.
Right.
Um, this, uh, came up kinda quickly, so I authorized, uh, Joel Barr to sign the dismissal because there's no downside to it. But I think we should just take a vote to...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So that was dismissed?
That was dismissed. And they also, they, they had two cases filed. One was in land court against the property owners for violation of the neighborhood covenants, and the other was against the property owners and the planning board for, uh, approval of the accessory apartment. And, uh, both cases have been dismissed.
Okay.
So they're gonna, they can put the accessory apartment in now, then?
Yes, they can.
And what about, uh...
It was already there.
And what about a letter going to Burkum, operating a business illegally in the residential district?
That's something for the...
That's something for what?
Zoning enforcement officer.
Zoning enforcement officer to look into it, if you wanna complain to him. I, I wasn't aware he was doing that.
Huh?
I wasn't aware he was doing that there.
Yeah, I heard he's running two businesses now.
The property, the, the, his, Okemo LLC is the owner of the property.
No?
Okemo Limited Liability Company is the owner of the house.
Excuse him from the bylaws?
I'm just commenting that that's, there's a business that owns the house, or an LLC that owns the house.
What really got me, he, he builds, he builds the house, and he builds an apartment in it, and then he's complaining about it.
Just for the record, I did make copies of the draft master plan and sent it out to the, uh... Put one in everybody's mailbox and requested comments by May 15th, 2017, on the draft.
And was there any language in there, if they don't respond, it's, it's, they, they agree with it?
No, I didn't put that in there, it just says, uh, please review and comment on attached plan by May 15th, 2017. Please direct comments to the planning board by said date. The planning board will review the comments and incorporate as appropriate into the plan. The point, the planning board intends to vote and accept the revised master plan by June 30th, 27, June 20th, 2017. So, that kind of tells them that if you don't, don't comment, we're gonna vote on it.
Right.
We're gonna vote on it anyways. Yes, sir?
Hi, Joe Eckerly, I talked to you guys a couple weeks ago about the taproom in Mill Valley Commons.
Yes.
And you guys have bring the butters, labels, facts, and giving to you guys, and that's what I'm here to do. Two copies of each.
What's going in there? Did you fill out the application we gave you?
Very similar businesses in Hattie County? Similar, I don't think so. No, so it's, it's taproom, it's gonna serve local...
Oh, that's right.
Craft beers, craft wines.
Correct, correct.
Barrel brewer focused. Um, no, I don't know of anything like that, but frankly, I'll be honest with you.
You're just, uh, fill that out, simple enough.
Oh, okay, I see.
Okay.
So...
Basically, name, address, and what, what you're doing. Um, any other business?
So we have to schedule this for a public hearing?
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah, we gotta fill out the fee, yeah. Public hearing would be... Make the 16th a busy night?
Uh, I think that's too busy. How about, uh, first meeting in June?
Kristen was saying something about the 10th, is there, or, or the May 10th? I thought she was telling me.
No, we only have two meetings a month, first and third Tuesdays.
And we don't have enough time to get a legal notice out for the first Tuesday. And we have four other hearings scheduled for the...
So, June 6th, this would be the taproom, Mill, June 6th.
So you want the landlord, or the owner of the property there, instead of me, the landlord of the, of the property?
Are you on here? No, just put down Mill Valley Commons, I, I know who that is, that's fine. Property owner, number...
Does he have to have a letter from the landowner stating that it's okay what he's doing?
No.
No?
No.
We have not generally requested that. And we've never had an issue, we've only once had an issue with it in thirty years.
Only because if we grant it to him, if the landlord says, we don't want that, that's land...
Well, just, I think about the paragis sign, that he said, the owner said, yeah, the owner didn't say, no.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, I've got the lease agreement and everything else, but I'm happy to get that if I needed, it's, it's really easy. Um, no spot for my name, just write my name anywhere on here?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And a mailing address for you.
Okay.
Yes, that would be good.
You left us some, uh, flyers or something?
Yeah, I just had a brief write-up on it.
Okay, do you still have that? Do you still have one, Joe?
Might be in the, uh, okay.
I cleaned out my notebook, and I know I saw it, but it's back to the office.
It might be in the other room.
And that date was June 1?
June 6th.
June 6th, okay.
Well, it's right on here. Okay, just taking, filed that with the town clerk and the fee.
Thank you very much.
And you'll see one, June 6th.
June 6th, thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you. It's not even listed on here as an address, how about that? That's okay. Anyways, all right, anything else?
I have nothing else.
I have nothing else. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is history, thank you.